All persons, organizations, and media outlets, as requested, have been notified of the time, date, place, and agenda for this meeting. The meeting is now officially called to order. Our agenda item is the adoption presented by -- excuse me, is the work session for underperforming schools presented by Dr. Minor.
Thank you Commissioner Weston.
Hold, Dr. Weston.
Oh, yes, sir.
You can say without objection, the agenda is approved?
Without objection, the agenda is approved. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Weston, Dr. Witherspoon, Board of Commissioners. As I prepared for the work session tonight, just kind of wanted to follow up that it is part of South Carolina Code 59181615, that a school is classified as underperforming if it receives an overall report card rating of below average or unsatisfactory. And these ratings are assigned annually based on the release of the report card results. So, the plans that you have were emailed to you on Friday, January 24th. They have been updated and they are at your seats today. I did want to start just with a brief overview of the accountability system and how these schools get their ratings. And I did put a chart, or I did put hard copies of this for you as I go through it quickly. But just kind of wanted to remind you that elementary and middle schools have these indicators. So you've got academic achievement, that's your South Carolina Ready, ELA, and math; preparing for success, which is your science; student progress, which is your student growth; school climate, which are the surveys; and then you have your English language learners or your multilingual learners. At the high school, you have preparing for success, which is your biology and U.S. history, CCR, college and career ready; you have your English language learners; you have your high school student success rate, that is new; you have school climate, again, which are your surveys; the grad rate; and then academic achievement, which is your end of course for Algebra I and for English II. And when we look at the rating points, you can see at the high school, the main changes at the high school level, when they added the high school student success rate indicator, they had to take points away from graduation rate and CCR. So now your graduation rate is worth 19 points; your CCR rate is worth 19 points; and your high school student success is worth 12 points. And so we did kind of argue with the State Department and say, really grad rate is what we want to look at, can we make that even worth more? But they denied that and said that this is what it's going to be. So as of this past year, the 23-24 school year, these are the points that schools could earn. So when we look a little bit closer at the achievement indicator for elementary and middle, you can study this a little bit more, but basically it's the students at your school who are there on the 45th day, and then they are there on that first day of testing, or the 160th day, because each school district calendar, each school district has the last 20 days in their calendar to test now. So there's not one state set date that the state sets. So whatever Richland I's 160th day is, that's when we can start testing; Richland II's 160th day may be different; Ori's may be different, but as long as we test within that 20-day window. So if I had Dr. Hershey, she was here on the 45th day, and she stayed continuously enrolled, that means she didn't take a vacation and pull out for a week and come back, she was there continuously up to that 160th day, she would count in these ratings. And then what I do is take a total of those students, as you can see, there were 163, and I multiply it by what are the most points these students could reach, which is three. So that gave me 489. Then I would look at all my students and give them points for their scores. So all of my does not meet, zero; my approaches, I give one point; my meets, I give two; my exceeds, I give three. And then I add that total up and I divide it by the 489, which would give me .578, that's the proportion. And then I multiply that times the points, 35, which gives me 20.23, and that would be a good rating. Or if I do not have a multilingual population at my school, I would multiply it by 40, and that would give me a 23.12, which would put me at excellent, just for that indicator that I'm looking at. So at the high school level, we're looking at the academic achievement, is looking at your English II and your Algebra I. It works almost the same, except for the EOC, you can have up to four points for the regular test, and up to three points if they're taking the South Carolina ALT test. And so you basically are looking at the students that count for this, a little bit further down, you'll see that, it's any student that is enrolled in an end-of-course test during this year. Then you're going to look at any students from eighth grade last year that took any end-of-course tests, and we're going to add them in. And then we're also going to look at that graduating cohort to see and make sure that they took the test at some point in time during their four years in school, to make sure they have those end-of-course tests. So that's what we're looking at for that. So just kind of wanted to give you, and in the example, like you said, if I had 320 students times four, that gives me 1280; I had 15 that took South Carolina ALT, so 15 times three is 45, gives me 1325, multiply that and by 25, and that would give me 13.69. And based on the reference guide for high school academic achievement indicators, they would get good for that. And as I said, I know I'm doing this quickly because I don't want to take up too much time. So student progress growth indicator, this is the one that had the most changes. We spent pretty much, I want to say, almost a good eight months getting ready for what the state told us we were going to be averaged on for our growth. The median annual target, the added value target, we were pushing it. My principals knew their students, they knew what these kids had to have, and then at the last minute in February, they said, oh, the state, I mean, the federal government denied that plan, so now you need to add in value added as well. So now we have three components of the growth that were added. And so just to kind of give you an idea, I know this is small, but you can see that we would look at, so Carol Minor in third grade scored 487, you round that down to the nearest 10, gave me 480. And then there's a chart that's out there in the accountability manual that says Carol needs to score 74 points to have her median annual target, which is that 50% growth percentile just for me. They figure it out individually. And so I would have needed, I needed to score a 561, which would put me at meets, as I took it as a fourth grader. And then to meet my added value target, the added value target is anywhere from 55% up to 80th% growth percentile. And if I am a student that hits my target and I'm at that 80th growth percentile, I could give you up to 13 points. And if I meet my MAT and don't meet my AVT, I can give you some partial points as well. And so we do that for ELA, we do that for math, the principals get that. We have a formula calculation that I send out to the schools, and then they themselves, the principals are on top of it as well. They normally have it figured out just as quickly as I do. And you can see, we do the same thing for math. And then what we do is we go back and we look. So you can see, the first student there, they did not meet it, they met the MAT but did not meet the AVT, and so we got partial points. So we were able to multiply 1.89, and that kid, instead of giving me 10 points, I got six points, six point something points for that. So at least it allows us to get those partial points, it's not an all or none. And then the same thing at the bottom one, you can see for that student, they did meet the MAT, they met the AVT, and so they, a total for that kid, you would have gotten four total points for that student. All right, so just the updated growth metric, you can see, the old growth model was the VAM, the added value, the value added, I can talk tonight, and looked at the overall growth in that bottom 20th lowest percentile. And so the new growth model was supposed to be the added value growth model with the MAT and the AVT. But now, it's all of them together. And so you would have 33% of the VAM, 33% of the MAT, 33% of the AVT, and so that's how they figured out student growth for those students in grades four through eight. All right, so the prepared for success, of course, this is your South Carolina science, we did not have that last year. We did take it, but it just didn't count, and so, but it will be counting coming up this spring when we take it. And so the same success indicator, as far as how many students will count for you, times three, what points did you earn, and we multiply that and divide. For the high school, of course, end-of-course test, that's the U.S. History Biology I for the preparing for success. Then we look at the school climate. School climate is 10 points for elementary and middle and five points for high school. This is something we cannot replicate, it asks teachers and students questions. We have to have 80% participation of teachers, 80% participation of students. They only can take it through their power school student portal, it's not, they can't take it any other way. And so we normally will have schools that will set up, especially those elementary students, those third graders, where it's the first time that they're having to take this test, or take the survey, we really want to work with them and make sure that they have access to it. And then only certain questions from those surveys are part of it. So the teacher has three domains, instructional focus, working conditions, and safety, and the students have a physical environment and safety. And so that basically is your school climate. So that is worth, like I said, 10 points at the middle level and five points at the high school level. So then, middle level progress, that did change last year. We used to be able to count those students who were our M's, they were just being monitored, and we would get great scores. And so we had a lot of schools that were scoring excellent or good for our multilingual population. Well, the federal government came down and said that you can have a 4.4 to exit, and then just a four in any one, like listening or reading, one of those subsections of the access test. And so we lost several students that we could count for schools, and so that did kind of decrease those multilingual learner scores for each of our schools, and that counted 10 and 10. But here, as I said, if I'm a school that does not have that multilingual population, then five points of that 10 will go into academic achievement and make that worth 40 points for me, and the other five will go into preparing for success and make that 40%. Well, I'm trying to think, is it preparing or student progress? Let me double-check on that, I think it might be student progress, and both of those would rate at 40. And so that increases your points for those schools. And then again, here's the chart, so you can see what screener level they were at, and then how many years, and that will let you know how many points and how many of those students we can, and this is based on the access we did test, it's not based on South Carolina Ready at all. This is a completely separate test that this is based on, for those multilingual students. Then, of course, graduation rate. Your graduation rate, to get that, of course, you're looking at your, the number in your cohort, your denominator, how many of those, and your numerator actually did graduate with a regular diploma, that gives you your grad rate for your school. But when you're looking at the indicator for the report card, it is figured just a little bit differently. So you have to kind of look at that, they, it will do, I'm trying to think the formula, forgive me because I didn't put the slide in here, but you're looking specifically at what your graduate, how many kids were there, how many kids weren't, you divide it by two, multiply it times .5, there's like a formula that you have to use, and that will give you what your graduation rate indicator would be for a school. So you have your graduation rate, the 89, 92, and then you have a graduation rate indicator, which is that score. And that would be worth 19 points for a high school. So the student, the high school student success is worth 12 points. So basically, what they're trying to do is they did some research that said, if a student in their freshman year can earn six credit courses, and one has to be in ELA and one has to be in math, for a total of six credit courses, then they are on track to graduate. That means they can hopefully be successful, they're not going to have to repeat the ninth grade, and they can move on and get the next credit and the next credit. And so what they're doing now is they are starting to give schools points for students that do meet that. There are some caveats, though, they have to have completed the courses by that 180th day. So if I'm a student and I scored a 52, and I'm going to have to take credit recovery, I'm not going to count for my school. I'll count next year, but I'm not going to count for this year for them. So that's why our principals at the high school level are trying to make sure that these students get what they need as quickly as possible. And then we're looking at that second year on track, which you'll need to have 12 credits, two math and two ELA. So we have a way to pull that and track that for our principals, and then the State Department is also trying to help us with that as well, because we want to track that, just like we do our CCR and graduation rate, so that we know, hey, this student is in danger of not making those six credits or those 12 credits. So I know that we're on that. And then, of course, the high school student success indicator, you look at that numerator and denominator, so you can kind of look at the students with that 9GR24, and with the high school student success, it also counts any of those fifth-year graduates, it will count any of those students who got a GED through adult ed, you'll get a point for them. And then you're also going to get a point for any of those who got their certificate, that employability certificate, where they took specific tests. And so we track that as well. And so then you do this formula, and then that will give you your high school student success formula rate. And so we are starting to track that for our students as well. We get reports from adult ed, we're also tracking through our special services department, those that are going to get that. And then the other one, you know, if you get, if the student does get their regular diploma from adult ed before that cohort graduates, then it will count for that high school. So that is one thing that I know that Dr. Coats works really hard with our high schools on. All right, so as I said, we do have some changes, and just to let you know, we are testing new standards for ELA this year. So growth for ELA will only be that value-added measure. We won't have any median annual targets or added value targets for ELA, period. So we're not going to be able to replicate that. For math, we will have all three. And next year, in '25-'26, it will switch, because we will be testing new math standards. And so then after that, we should be on our way to growth and looking at growth for both subjects, I am hoping. But knowing the track record, we may change tests by that time, who knows? And so that's just a really quick, brief presentation about accountability, and I know that Dr. Witherspoon, I've said this several times, this could be an all-day workshop. I know y'all don't have time for that, and those of you who've been principals and have done this, you kind of know how much of a moving target it really becomes every single year. So I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about some items with our plans, that the plans do follow the outline of each school improvement renewal plan, and each school's continuous improvement plan uses data to establish those SMART goals, like it normally does when they're doing their school improvement plans, this turnaround plan, and then they all are in tune with the profile of the South Carolina graduate. But due to differences in the schools' demographics, challenges, performance data, the plans will vary for each school to address those specific needs. And then the program effectiveness and requirements are determined, again, based on that school's report card information, they really are looking at that, they've gone over it with their teachers, they've gone over it with their SIC, they're getting input on that. And then we allow them flexibility based on their demographics and their data, some of them may use visible learning, some of them may have restorative practices, and other items that they're using at their school to help with that. And now the costs associated with this, schools receive no money from the state for being an underperforming school, some of the schools are CSI or ATS I or priority, so they will have some extra funds for that, some of the schools are also Title I, and you'll see that at the top of their plans, if they are designated for something else other than underperforming, it will show that. So that's why there could be some variables in the costs that are in that plan. Our principals are here tonight, I want to thank them for being with us, and so they are here to answer any of those site-specific questions that you may have, and we open the floor to your questions.
Thank you. Going back, what is the cutoff date you said for summer school to count?
Oh, summer school, now, it will count if you're a summer graduate, but it will not count to be an on-track-to-graduate, it won't. You have to, you have to have finished everything by the last day of school, the 180th day of school. Then, over the summer school time, if you take credit recovery, we can count that class for you next year, and hopefully you'll be on track to graduate as a sophomore or as a junior.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Are the questions for Dr. Minor directly?
I'm sorry, are the questions for you specifically, or for the principals?
It doesn't matter, I mean, if you ask the question and if I can answer it, great, if not, the principals are here to help. Yes, ma'am.
So I have a, just a few for clarification purposes, Dr. Minor.
Yes, ma'am.
Students, you mentioned that they got their GEDs, it would still count towards the high school graduation rate, is that correct?
No, they do not count toward the graduation rate, they count in that high school student success rate.
Success rate, not, okay.
Right, yeah, that's it, yes, ma'am.
And the plans, all of the plans were done in an attempt to help, I'm trying to, one of my questions was, the overall purpose of every plan is for principals to document what they're doing in an attempt to help improve the scores from the previous year?
Correct.
And so, I just wanted to know, some of the, I noticed that with the new, the printout that we have, some of the changes for the questions that I did have have already been adjusted, so I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
One of them still has 2026, and so in my mind, I thought we were working just towards for the year, the goal is to improve for 2025, not to go to 2026.
Yes, ma'am, I missed that, I tried to go back and do all of them, but I may have missed that, but you are absolutely correct. In the process of getting these ready, they also had a 30-day update that was due to the Office of Federal and School Programs, and so I think they moved that ahead for some of them, and I didn't catch it, so that's on me, I'll go back and catch that.
I was just confused in the beginning, because it was more than one place, but I see it's changed.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, when it comes to, and this has always been a discussion, with interventions, we have so many options for our interventions. How do you, are we looking at which schools are being successful and which interventions they're using compared to those schools that may not be as successful, and could it have anything to do with the number of interventions that they're using? Like, there's so many different things in these plans, that it's almost impossible to be able to tell which ones are really helping. And so just as a district whole, no one has to come up and answer that one individually, but that is something that I think we need to look at.
Well, I think that Dr. Williams would be able to answer that, because I know that teaching and learning has worked very hard, they're, they're working to transform the schools, and they have, that issue has been brought up. So Dr. Williams, would you mind addressing that?
But let me, before you address it, so my, but what I want to know is, are the principals able to articulate or given the autonomy to articulate what's working for their schools and not being forced to use certain things, or things are in place that's not completely being followed through with fidelity?
We always want to take into consideration the principal's perspective, and of course, we all go back to the data, right, and what the school data is telling us. The programs we suggest that we have on our list have been vetted, they're researched, they have been shown to work for children like ours, in an intervention perspective. We also, when you think about intervention, the other piece of that, the other side to that coin, is also core instruction. And for us in teaching and learning, we also want to make sure that we have strong, reliable, core tier-one instruction, because that's, that's going to help us really move the needle more than intervention will ultimately, because the children that are receiving intervention are also in the midst of that core instruction. So it's really working on both of those, but it's truly looking at what does that child need at that point. And from our perspective, when we think about how do we move a child, it's looking at that individual data that that child presents us with, and what are they missing, what are the gaps, how can we make sure that that child is receiving that instruction and able to demonstrate that on any given test? And that's why you hear us talk about PLCs, you hear us talking about teachers sharing information, what's working, what's not working, at that tier-one level, to make sure that we give our kids the best opportunity they can have to be successful. And so it's a multi-tiered approach, we definitely can delve more into that for you if you'd like, but there are a lot of moving pieces, we hope, that are helping our schools to move. But our principals have a valuable, important voice in that process, and we want to make sure that we're giving them every opportunity to be successful.
Thank you.
Are there any principals that would like to, to add to what Dr. Williams said? Don't everybody answer at once.
Can I also share one other thing, Dr. Minor?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things I think that I'm most proud of, when you think about plans like this, is every month, the EDs of schools, the leadership team at the school, including the principal, staff from teaching and learning, both the academic side and also on the funding side, if it's title programming, we gather at the table at that school, and we look at their plan, and we look at what's working, what's not working, how can we adjust, what do you need, how can we support you? And we look at that on a monthly basis, and we carve out that time and keep that time as priority, so that we're all at the table, including me, so that we know what's working and what's not working. And I think that's, for us as a district, is a real valuable piece of this work, so that all voices are heard.
Commissioner Clyburn?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Minor, for that presentation. I have, I had one question, but after Commissioner Hershey's question about the GED, I do have an additional question. That determination, was that made from the state level to not consider a GED for, okay?
Right, because it, they are not truly sitting for the 120-seat time-hours that they need to be able to get those 24 credits, and it truly is not a regular high school diploma. And it used, we used to get no points whatsoever, it would count against our, our schools, which it still does, so this was their way to try to give those schools some points, and try to say, okay, well, at least the student did get a GED, so that is an equivalent, and we will give you a point for that. But that is a federal thing as well, that the GED does not count as a high school diploma. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for that information. My question is about the value-added portion or aspect, the decision that was made to change how it affects, you know, our system or our outcomes, that decision that was made in February, seems to be, you know, at the nth hour. Can you go into detail about how that may have adversely affected, you know, the outcomes of our schools? I just think it's important to, you know, make sure that we're keeping in context, you know, of how that may have affected everyone.
Yes, ma'am. I will tell you that, once we found out about the new added value, the MAT and the AVT, I went to several, several schools myself, and we did presentations to the principals, and we broke it down as far as, here is this student's MAT, here is this student's AVT. Our curriculum coordinators, everybody looked at that to see, okay, Carol Minor, you need to, as I showed on that slide, you need 59 points, and that will make your score go to this, to meet your MAT, and then you need another 40 points to be able to meet your added value target. So the Education Oversight Committee got together, and they looked at all of the South Carolina Ready data, and they saw this bell curve, which you're going to see, of students who are does-not-meets, are going to stay at does-not-meets as they even go up through eighth grade. And so what they also did is they looked statistically at those kids who started out at does-not-meets, and then actually were able to get to meets or exceeds. And so they calculated all of that, and they came up with this chart. So if you look at the accountability manual, in the student growth section, student progress section, it will have this chart, and that's what we used to make those, where it will say that if Dr. Moore, he scored a 389 as a third grader ELA in fourth grade, he needs to score this to meet his MAT and this to meet his AVT, because historically, students like him will be able to make progress if we continue moving them on this trajectory. And so what the EOC wanted to do is to give us as schools the ability to help these students meet their growth targets, because using the old value-added measure, it was basically this box that this corporation in North Carolina put everything into, and they calculated, here's what that student's growth should be. We could never duplicate that. We could try, and we could say, okay, according to STAR, or according to R-I and M-I, this is what we think Dr. VC is going to score at the end of this year. And so we had all of that, but it really, truly is not something we can replicate. The value-added model with the AVT and the MAT is something that we can replicate. I know that I went to Dr. Pickett's Middle School, Gibbs Middle, and went over his list with him, and then he made student goal sheets, and his teacher sat down and talked to every single student, and let them know, here's your MAT goal, here's your AVT goal, this is where we need you to be when you take South Carolina Ready at this time, and really had them create a vested interest in their scores and where they needed to be. So we were using it, our CRTs were using it after STAR testing, I know Teaching and Learning was looking at it, the executive directors were looking at, how close are these students to be able to meet their growth targets? So in the scheme of things, if we were able to keep that, I think we would have seen a little bit better growth. The only caveat with that were our schools that were already high-flying schools, because if you are only at the 55th percentile, that means you scored really, really well, and you know, once you hit that ceiling, it's hard to go, whether you're taking MAP or anything else, once you hit that ceiling, you're not going to be able to move it much. And so I could only get three points for that student. Whereas if it were me, and I were at the 80th percentile, and I met my added value, you're going to get 14 points, you'll get a point that I met my MAT, and then you'll get 13 points for me, because I met that added value target. Well, the federal government came back and said, no, you can't do that, in February, after we'd put it in and they had given verbal approval, and came back in and said, no. So what the EOC and the State Department decided was to, okay, let's not scrap everything that we've started, we will just measure it out. after we'd put it in and they had given verbal approval, and came back in and said, no. So what the EOC and the State Department decided was to, okay, let's not scrap everything that we've started. We will just measure it out and say, 33% will be that added value target, 33% will be that MAT target, and then 33% will be that box that we really can't replicate. Now, I will tell you, looking back, the added value model does help a little bit with our schools that are high priority, when you're looking at the numbers, but not enough to make a difference. And one of the things that the value-added model was trying to do is they were trying to give two ways to figure out. So if I were at a high-flying school, and I didn't have as many points because I have a lot of students that only gave me two or three points, then what it would do is it would give me another way to where if I had 80% of my school meet that added value target, then that would bump up my score and show that I am making growth, because my kids are still continuing to grow. So I think the federal government pushed back on that. And so the state came back, and the EOC and the state both said, okay, well, this is how we're going to tweak it. And then at the ninth hour, they had to run and change all of their statistical things. But the same thing with the multilingual learners, taking out all those Ms., that was a last-minute decision that we were told at the last minute. And because those, like I said, those students that are just being monitored really, really can score better, and we do get better scores out of them for the school. So I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Yeah. Thank you. Dr. Minor, let me ask you one more thing. And I know this is not a form that you did, I know it was done by the State Department. Under where it says implement and phase, under the monitoring phase...
Are you on the PowerPoint?
Just in general, no, I'm just looking in general, just for my understanding.
Okay. Oh, okay.
With the 30, 60, 90-day review.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we using this, what's going to be our measurement district-wide? How are you going to track that? What's going to be the update for showing that progress is being made in those areas? Because if the goal is for SC Ready, then you don't have, of course, you're not going to have SC Ready until April. So what do you?
They are using, they're using the Mastery Connect Benchmark Assessments, they're using their STAR assessments that students are taking. And some of the principals have already done their 30-day updates. I'm trying to think, which principal would come up and just talk about their 30-day updates and how they're using the data when they don't have South Carolina Ready? Do I have a volunteer? Thank you. Come on down, you're the next contestant.
For Pine Grove, what I'm using, one of my goals is for MLs, because I have MLs at my school. We have about 10 different languages at Pine Grove. So two measurements that we are using for that goal is our WITA model assessment, in which the teachers are able to progress, monitor our ML students to see how they will do when they get ready to take the WITA assessment, in which we just started taking WITA this week. And we'll take WITA until March and then get those results. And we also use our STAR data, in which I can analyze just our ML population using the Renaissance System. And the other goal that I use is for reading, and then I have one for math. And I use both my STAR reading and both my STAR math data to monitor that goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question. Looking at Hayward Gibbs Middle School.
Yes, ma'am.
I was really pleased to see where their strengths were, where they're surveying conclusions based on the rating points.
Uh-huh.
That, looking at school climate overall, the results of teacher surveys indicated that teacher perceptions of instructional focus, teaching perceptions of working conditions, all of those things are added. And I applaud you for doing that, because I didn't have to try to think what is being done in those surveys. It's an excellent model.
Let me speak to that.
Absolutely.
By way of introduction, my name is Dr. Gregory T. Pickett. I have the honor and privilege of being the principal of Hayward Gibbs Middle School. 500 Summer League Drive, for those who have not visited in a while, where we are unapologetically the small school with the big heart. Yes, we look at that data, we disaggregate that data, which is found on the report card. And I think Dr. Minor indicated that survey participation, our students take the survey, the teachers take the survey. And I believe one area that we can improve in is parental participation with the survey. Because we sometimes have lower levels of participation with that. And that information is very valuable for us to know how our parents perceive the services that we are offering at Hayward Gibbs Middle School. But yes, we did disaggregate that, and we want to focus on those things, teacher perceptions of the instructional focus. So when you look at the plans, you should see some alignment for Gibbs in terms of the training that we're doing, visible learning is a big portion of that, because that helps us focus our teachers on instruction. When you're talking about that student engagement piece, when you're talking about that teacher clarity piece, certainly that helps our teachers to know that we have a clearly coherent instructional focus at Hayward Gibbs. Teacher perceptions of the working conditions, well, of course, we want our teachers to want to work at Gibbs, and by extension, want to work at Richland County School District One. There are many things that go into that, that you will not capture in the survey necessarily. Mr. Grant with the operational piece, what do our buildings look like? How do our buildings feel? How clean are our buildings? All of that is captured in that piece. And then teacher perceptions of safety. That really goes to that climate and culture piece, and dealing with, in many ways, something that we don't discuss a lot, teachers' perceptions of safety can revolve around student behavior. So do you have fights going on in the building on an ongoing basis? I think we did a great thing with the metal detectors or weapons detectors. Teachers certainly like to see that and feel more safe based on those initiatives. So there are certain things that we're doing that will not be encapsulated in these plans verbatim. We have a wide range of interconnected systems here in Richland One, and all of those systems must function together for us to improve our schools on a day-to-day basis. What other questions might you have of Hayward Gibbs?
I would think that Hayward Gibbs would be a beautiful roadmap for others to look at. It was very easy to read, to understand, and you put it in there in such a way that I could see you working toward growth. So I commend you on that.
Thank you so much. And I'd like to recognize my colleagues who are also joining in this most difficult work of improving our schools here in Richland County School District One. I want to thank you all.
Okay. Wonderful. Any... Okay.
I do have a couple of observations, maybe, and a question. I also wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Weston shared, in that I too made a note that it looked like the area, the discussion of strengths and areas for improvement seemed to have been really well put forth in the Hayward's stuff. It was, obviously, they had thought through a good bit of it. Not that there was anything wrong with any of the others, but it was kind of, it felt like it took a step beyond, and we appreciate that. I also, just for clarification purposes, wanted to make sure that we all, I don't mean necessarily us, but anybody who happens to be listening or whatever to this discussion understands that we are actually talking about plans that, where we are supposed to have goals met by the end of this school year. And I think people sometimes don't realize that we always start off behind the eight ball, for whatever reason. A lot of it has to do with when data is available, and we do the best we can. But, you know, it's not that, it doesn't mean that schools are not already implementing these things that are listed here, because they have to be in order to meet the goals there. The other observation I had was, there seem to be a couple of the schools that I didn't see data sources listed for. And I was wondering if there was a specific reason for that. I didn't see, and I hate to call anybody out, because I don't know what the, I don't know what all the instructions were, but with Burton Pack, I didn't see data sources. And I don't think I saw any at C.A. Johnson. And I didn't know if that was just an oversight or what was... In the, right there, the implementation in Phase Four on Page Five, for Burton Pack, it says, what data sources are used to monitor the goals?
Right. I do see some on there, but we do have Dr. Hill Robinson here. I'll let her answer her question.
Hello. This is Dr. Robin Hill Davidson from Burton Pack. I also included an attachment with documentation that's on there. There's a couple links that is under Phase Four, under Documentation. And under the Burton Pack Data Report, it has a breakdown of the data sources on there. I also have that information included with me, which will give you an overview. We have also done our update, looking at Goal Number One, which is by June of this year, we will meet or exceed the South Carolina State LRE goal for school-aged children. We are not only a underperforming school, we're also ATSI school because of special education. Burton Pack is currently at 71.4%. So we are above where the state average is as of right now. Our Goal Number Two, by June 2025, that Burton Pack will reduce the number of disciplinary refractions and, such as OSS, out-of-school suspension and reset referrals, by at least 40% as measured by A, power school and reset applications. At this time last year, Burton Pack had over 30% of hearings and counting. We have only had two hearings this year to the Hearing Board, and we've only had three kids go to reset this year. Last year, Burton Pack had the highest number of reset, kids go to reset of any school in the district. We also had the highest number of kids with chronic apsyotism, the highest number for any school in the district, which was 58.4% at the end of last school year. Burton Pack has gone as low as 19.1% this year. This past month, with all the illnesses, we did go up to 32.1%. But at this same time last school year, Burton Pack was at 51.2%, which is a difference of 19.1%. So we are definitely on track. If you look at Goal Number Three, by June 2025, Burton Pack will increase the climate and culture as measured by surveys for scholars, staff and parents. We're also increasing our parent community engagement to one to two monthly events for scholars, staff and families. That documentation is also included on that link. We are also implementing PBIS, a school store, and monthly celebrations for scholars with 95% or higher attendance, positive behavior, including decreased referrals, academics and assessment. Burton Pack is definitely on track. Looking at the data which you have there, we have, looking at our SPED STAR data, which we are ATSI and school improvement for underperforming, of the 28 scholars that we have, looking at fall STAR reading, Burton Pack is at 40%, which is our goal. STAR math, 52.5% above our goal, and also above our goal on STAR early literacy, which is 42.9%. Looking at the Burton Pack discipline data, as far as SPED is concerned, we've also drastically reduced our numbers with SPED and all scholars. Last year, Burton Pack had over 500 referrals, over 198 out-of-school suspensions. We are far below that right now. And so we have definitely changed the climate and the culture. Burton Pack is scoring in the top four with kindergarten and fifth grade, according to winter STAR reading, when you look at growth. So we are definitely making our way towards the top. Everyone knows our goal is to be in the top three, or at least not to be at the bottom as last school year. We do not want to remain in underperforming, and we're working very hard every day to not be at that level. Looking at the district winter STAR reading, we were at 41.4%. And looking at the state benchmark, we're at 36.3% meeting and exceeds. And our school-wide goal is 39.4%. Burton Pack at the end of last year was at 21.8% on SC Ready. We are definitely scoring above, and we plan to maintain at the same level. So that documentation is attached. If you need another copy of it, I do have a hard copy as well for you. And just looking at the resource and equity goal, 40% of children with disabilities will meet their growth target as measured by spring STAR reading and/or STAR math. And so we're working very hard, we're celebrating the data every opportunity we get, we share the data with our parents, with our school community. And so we are working very hard, and I'm pleased at what we're doing. But I do not want to remain at the bottom. And everyone who knows me knows I'm highly competitive, and every school I've been at, I've turned it around, and we're working hard to continue the growth that we're having at Burton Pack. But I can give you even more specific data if you would like to have that as well. So just let me know whatever you need, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much.
Did you see the attachment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, these are the original plans. I did not send any 30-day updates, because that's only for the Office of Federal Programs. We need to approve the original before we can do the 30-day update. So you do not see that data, that's why I didn't include it. But thank you for sharing. Dr. Coe?
All right. Good afternoon, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Dr. Coe, Principal of C.A. Johnson High School. I do apologize for any oversight in data, but I'm here to answer any questions around data that you may have. We have about 328 students. Our poverty population has went up from 95% to 96%, and we have over 20% SPED population at our school. We do not have an ML population, so that factors into our academic achievement as well as our graduation data. In the one year so far that I have been there, I'm currently working on second, as long as you would have me, we have gone from 67% graduation to a 70% graduation. This year, we're tracking for 76. If you look at the last five to 10 years of C.A. Johnson's history in school report card, you would not see a number of 76 for that graduation rate. With that, our academic growth metrics, if you look across the district, we were higher than every single high school. So we are making strides, and we are moving in the right direction. We was number two in math, if I want to remember correctly. So we are currently working on that, we are currently moving towards those goals. We use various forms to track in data. We have numerous things that we get through the Instructional Office in regards to STAR, IXL, Dr. Hesger, tell you, I call him multiple times a day, just to talk about looking at how to look at the data and talk about the data. We use STAR as well, we do STAR algebra, we assess our students more probably than a lot of other schools in the district, just to make sure that we are properly analyzing and putting together plans to make sure our students are successful. We have weekly, if not twice a week, meetings with our PLC teams around our EOC scores. We had meetings today, where we discussed the CFAs that students have already been getting taken through the District Office on Mastery Connect, as well as ones that we create through Progress Learning, using the same standards that the state has uploaded through those programs and approved through those programs. So in regards to our CCR, as a CSI school, we have to increase it by 5% in order to come off the list. That is one of the requirements. We are already sitting at 50.6% for this school year. So that requirement has already been met. So with that being said, I think the last goal was around school climate. It is written, because back then, when the plan was originally discussed, there was 10 points there, but we know in high school, it's only five. So the eight would be a four. In regards to that, last year, we sat at a 2.28 when I took the job, we moved up to a 3.21. So we almost moved up a whole point in regards to school climate. So we are moving and progressing in that direction as well. So with that being said, do y'all have any further questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Bishop?
Hey, thank you so much, Reashere. Not to belabor the moment, but I appreciate what Dr. Pickett and Dr. Robinson Hill Davidson highlighted, which is, most of their strides and success has a lot to do with parental involvement. If we are going to emphasize something that is working, let's emphasize that, I think a majority of you are Title I schools probably, that, and that's a federally funded program, that we need to make sure that we are trying to do everything to protect that funding. Because if you're telling me that working with the parents is getting better because of the practices and the time spent with the parents, because as we try to bring closer the home life to the schoolhouse life, that's the climate. And that's what Dr. Pickett said. So I just wanted to, you know, really emphasize that for the public and to this board, that we need to continue to support that. So maybe just one question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any outside partners? Because I know federally funded opportunities through Title I is supporting our parent-teacher engagement specialists, our parent engagement specialists. What other partnerships are helping some of your schools from the What other partnerships are helping some of your schools from the community to help engage parents?
So, there's a lot of different partnerships and I won't speak for everyone, but we have different programs as far as A V I D, we have church partnerships. We have even local organizations that have ties to our different schools that come out or donate funds in various ways and assistance. Uh, we do the mentoring program, uh, with R One Champs as well as other different mentoring programs. And we also have the grant that we just received from Kerry Abel's office. Now we have a specialist that specifically looking at our eighth grade students that are chronically access, our male African-American male population as well as the ninth graders. And he is currently housed at C A Johnson High School and Perry Middle School. And that is also another thing that is helping and assisting us because those are means to get in contact with those parents. Those are extra hands, extra, uh, irons in the fire, as we like to refer to them, that assists with opening up that relationship. Um, dealing with impoverished students, a lot of the parents are resistant to communication and being hands-on in their student learners, and that could be for various reasons. But the more opportunities we provide them to have, um, meaningful engagement with our students and with our schools and opportunity to express their needs in comfortable situations where they can possibly get some of those needs met, really assist us.
Thank you. And, and, and one last question, Vice Chair, and Chair, I see you're here now. When we look at chronic absenteeism as one of the challenges for trying to move schools forward, what, what has worked for you all to combat that? Um, I just wanted to make sure we put some color to the data that we're getting. What, what has really worked to get kids to show up?
So for C A Johnson, and then I'll defer, um, is making learning meaningful. So making meaningful experiences and meaningful connections with students. They show up because they feel like you care and you want them there and you want them to be successful. And that has moved the needle more so than most. Um, what makes it difficult is most of us work in transient populations. So their housing could change in the split twinkling of eye. I know for instance, for us, C A Johnson, we lost fourteen seniors that we knew were going to graduate. That factors in to the, the graduation ring in the school report card and the issues that we talk about. But we can't control their housing, we can't control where they stay and we can't change or do anything about that. But those are some of the factors that affect the success that the school per se would have on the numbers and the papers that you see that are printed in regards to what the school really looks like.
And at Burton Pack, um, like I said, we were the highest, um, not in a positive way, last school year with almost sixty percent. And ever since I started this summer, every opportunity that I get, I'm always being transparent, telling them the data. As I tell the parents, the kids don't drive, they're in elementary school. So it's up to them to make sure that the kids are getting to school on time. Also making sure that the kids are aware, uh, we changed and breakfast is no longer in the classrooms. They eat breakfast in the cafeteria, the door is open at seven to seven twenty-five is breakfast and instructional time starts at seven thirty A M. You get the kids to know, they help to motivate the parents. Also, it's a team effort. It's not something that I can do, my leadership team can do, it's something that we all do together, we partner. Every time we have an event, we've increased the events, we have surveys. We take the input of the families, of the communities, of the staff members. We just did our mid-year surveys with staff on yesterday and we're doing the scholars next week. I start my principal scholar advisory council tomorrow with the scholars, but it's a community event. We have our pastries or pastors, so I asked the Reverend Dr. Aaron Bishop and others, um, to join us on Thursday morning from eight to eight-thirty. Then we have the parents coming in from eight-thirty to nine. But every opportunity we get, we're letting them know. We're not just focusing on academics or attendance or positive behavior or assessments, everything is aligned. And so we have bulldog bucks at, um, Burton Pack. And so you would think that it was worth a million dollars. They're not, it's not real money, but they're able to earn bulldog bucks. And we have a P B I S school store that we created. And we also have monthly celebrations for ninety-five percent or higher attendance, for academics, for positive behaviors. We also do star data, um, parties where they got to invite one person in if they met their growth target. Several of them invited their parents in. And so these are the things, every opportunity, we're just being transparent. So we know it takes a village is a partnership. Um, we're having our real men read coming up March seventh, so we're inviting everyone to come out for that. We also have Divine Nine, February the fifth. So anyone that is Greek, um, we ask that they come out. So every opportunity we get, we're being intentional about what we're doing. So we're teaching the, uh, the teachers how to track the data, how to track the chronic absenteeism. And then we're also teaching the scholars what to do. And so we're celebrating not only our scholars, because we don't refer to them as students, they are scholars. And so we also are celebrating our faculty and staff. So it's just, it takes a village. Anyone would like to donate, we would love to take donations. We just received a thousand dollar donation. One of our teachers went into a school, I mean, into a store and she was just talking about the positive things that's helping to change the climate and culture at Burton Pack. And they came and they donated one thousand dollars just from her having that word of mouth. And so it's everybody really working together. So it's not just people inside the building. We're really trying to change the dynamics, the climate, the culture. Um, Burton Pack just placed second in the district spelling bee, we won the M O K, um, non-perishable food drive. So we are sharing our story. So every opportunity we get, we want our kids there. They know they need to be there, they can tell you their data. And so you have to be at school to be able to learn and they know they have two jobs at Burton Pack, to learn and behave. That's all I expect, so the teachers can do their job. We even have everybody in there, administrators are in there with small groups, we have related arts. Everybody is working together and so it's a community. So anyone that wants to come out and read to scholars or have them read to you or do some math, I'm very competitive. I do not want to be at the bottom, so we welcome your help whenever you are available. But, um, we're working hard on chronic absenteeism as well as everything else. And we're just making it align and making sure that the kids know exactly what their data and what their goals are.
Dr. Bishop, I intended not to speak again, but you said something that spoke to my heart is this, this issue of attendance. And I believe it is a little bit of cognitive dissonance to believe that we can educate children who are not in school. There's no alignment in that statement. And you bringing that up, uh, made me rise again. To, to point out a critically important point to me, if you would indulge me, Dr. Witherspoon, to say that it is critically important that we have social workers in our schools. Full-time social workers in every school, particularly schools which are on some of these lists from the State Department. Because social workers play a critically important role in helping us reach students that that telephone call doesn't reach when we send out the school messenger. They play a critically important role when we have a fire in the neighborhood and we need to find temporary housing for these families. Because once you get them temporary housing, you get them on McKinley Vento, we can then get them back in school. That is work that is incredibly difficult for school-based counselors, assistant principals and principals to do in addition to all the other responsibilities in the building. So I would implore the board, if we're serious about this work, let's find a way to do that, particularly for the schools that don't have that right now. Gibbs did not have a full-time social worker last year. Keenan High School loaned us their social worker one day a week for a school that had a fifty percent chronic absenteeism rate. If you want to know the impact, we talk about data. We're talking about going from fifty percent chronic absenteeism without a social worker to twenty-nine percent this year with a social worker. Money matching data, priorities. Certainly would also like to talk about what I know many of my colleagues, all of my colleagues are doing. We do a lot with attendance incentives. Um, there's a cohort of us that benefited from a grant through, uh, Ms. Antoinette Kelly Campbell's office. Uh, we received some funds to help us build out some school-level incentives. Um, this year we've taken our kids to Charleston. Uh, we have a trip to Stars and Strikes Bowling Alley for this month for those students who have ninety-five percent attendance or better. Um, and so incentives are a critically important piece. I bring incentives up because when we talk about federal funding and we talk about priority funding, it is very constricted with what you can use that funding for in regards to direct incentives to students. We have elongated conversations with the Office of Federal and State Programs to ensure that we are remaining in compliance with how we use those funds to provide incentives that are on that allowable list. And certainly I would advocate, I think, if you look at the job description of a principal advocacy is a major part. That's not just for individual students, that's for systems as well. We need to look at how we can better provide funding for incentives. I want to recognize my executive director, Ms. Ferguson, who gave us money from her budget last year to make sure that we could take students on the end of year eighth grade trip who did not have the money to pay because we couldn't fund that through Title I. And so perhaps we can look at how we can make that happen, particularly for my schools here, my colleagues here who are fighting that battle with attendance, as you mentioned, knowing that we need to find out-of-the-box innovative ways to motivate our students, to engage our parents in ways that may not be permissible with federal and state funding that we may not have any longer with the way things are looking. Thank you.
Hey, if you want to get up and talk again, you got my permission, okay? Uh, thank you, Vice Chair, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. First of all, I want to apologize to everybody that I was so late. And I thank Commissioner Weston, Vice Chair, for, uh, handling today. And I'll be very brief, but anytime somebody mentions social workers, I just cannot go without saying that not only should the goal be that we have one social worker full-time for every school, but for some of our schools, we need more than one to come even close to the amount of the ratio of social workers and high-needs families that really do need that support. Social workers, more so than any other person in the school, are specifically trained to examine and evaluate the dynamics of a family and connect them to outside resources. It's not that others in the school can't do it, but that's literally what social workers are trained to do. And, uh, anyone else having to do that work means they're not doing the things they were specifically trained to do. So I, I, I think that that is a great challenge to the board for, uh, that to be a goal of ours, to make sure that we prioritize, uh, getting more social workers, uh, in our schools and at least start with a goal of one full-time social worker per school. So thank you very much for bringing that up. Thank you, Vice Chair.
I'd like to ask a question. I know that when you sit at the roundtables and you're discussing things, do teachers have an opportunity to say, this program didn't work and so I think we need to change to something else? Or they're just listening to what the results are and not voicing, uh, part of, this may not be working for our children?
Yes, ma'am, we, um, and this really is a school question too, because I think some of those conversations happen at our school level. And of course, uh, anytime teachers can give us feedback, we want to hear that. And of course, through our teacher think tank, we're getting that feedback and looking at, uh, systems and processes and when things need to change. So absolutely, teacher voice matters and as we know, principal voice matters as well as they advocate for their schools, so absolutely.
And, and also just looking, we want to make sure that the programs that the teachers are using, that they are properly trained and are using it with fidelity because sometimes if I'm not using a tool the right way, I'm not going to get the results that I need. You know, I can't take a hammer and try to change a tire. So we want to make sure that they know those programs and can do them with fidelity. But yes, ma'am, that is, that is something that is taken into consideration.
Thank you. Um, our teachers are the front-runners. Uh, we appreciate the parents, we appreciate everyone, but that teacher stands in that classroom and they are there with our little ones, uh, and we've got to give them the support that they need. I'd like to say that, um, I appreciate the plans that were given. Having principals speak on some things that were not on paper helped tremendously. But I'd like to, again, go back to, when, the more information you give us on your strengths and what you're working on, the, the easier it is to pass through the eye of a needle. And so then when it gets to the State Department, it shouldn't have any issues there. Chair, I turn it back to you.
All right, Commissioner Clyburn?
Yes, thank you. Um, this may be a question for Dr. Witherspoon. I remember at one time, and this is going back to the, um, issue of, um, our social workers, um, being in, you know, the goal being in every school. Because I know that was our priority, um, um, earlier on, um, some months back. There were some social workers that were being, you know, um, trained and were recently hired, um, I think I remember. Do we have the, what the current status is right now for?
We can get you that number. And we have added, um, social workers over, over the years, um, as you've indicated. But we can, we can, we'll get that number and certainly follow that up.
Uh, Commissioner Moore?
Uh, one other observation, I, um, first of all, let me say thank you to our principals and through you to your faculties and staff for all the hard work. I've done this, I know it's hard work and there's a lot involved with it. And what I'd like to say is that I'm hoping that as a district, we'll be able to provide the kind of support that you and your staff needs as far as time and the ability to be able to sit down and do some of this work. I speak from the elementary perspective. I know middle and high school have the same issues, but they're, they're different kinds of issues. But, um, we really need to figure out ways to free people up that does not impact their instruction for students because we can't mess with that, but that gives them the time that's necessary to do this kind of work. Uh, if we're going to really, um, make a difference and have a teacher voice in what's, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but, um, I think it's important that we say it. The, when we talk about the materials and deciding what materials are being used, it's so important that we have the teacher's voice and that we look at each school individually and make decisions with stuff, with materials and programs that they know are effective for their children and that they are actually going to use in their classrooms and that they know how to use as opposed to moving from a district level into, you know, looking for one size fits all, one size fits the whole district kind of solutions. I know we're a, we're an organization and we have to do some things that way, but we just can't lose sight of the fact that the teachers and the principals and the administrators at each school are the experts on those children. And we've got to give them the time to work through all this. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Commissioner Lomenack, I did just want to make one addition and I, I forgot to mention this at the beginning. You will notice that there are some extra plans in there. When I pulled the first plans together through Adobe, it did not pull all the plans in and that was brought to my attention. So there are three extra plans in there now. Uh, we had Keenan, Eau Claire and Watkins Nance. So they are all in there now and I will blame that on Adobe. But yes, so just wanted you to know that that, that happened.
Note, note taken. Um, I, I want to thank all the board members for reading these plans and getting specific questions. To me, to get to the administration, to get to you all and thank all the folks who put in the extra work to get, um, this detail of these plans, I know is extraordinary and it is appreciated. Um, since it appears there are no further questions or comments, I think without objection, we will stand adjourned for this work session.